Here, Mr. Craftcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press in Cape McHenry on January 8th, 2017. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion concerning the minutes?
Madam Mayor, since all members of council have been provided with a copy of the minutes of the work session and the meeting of July 18th, 2017, and the work session and meeting of August 1st, 2017, if there are no additions or corrections, I move we dispense with the reading of the minutes and that they be approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll now have public comment. Anyone wishing to address mayor and council may do so at this time by coming forward to the microphone and stating your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Wally Bishop. I live in California, but here I'm 18. I'm 10601, Second Avenue in Stone Harbor. I want to talk to you on behalf of the P O A about what you just heard about your flood management plan. And we are going to prepare written comments. I know it's a draft, and I want to compliment Jill for giving me a heads up on what's in the plan. So we've kind of looked, it's rough, I get it. There's no data in it. You know, the big holes where what are you going to make the bulkheads elevation are critical. But we have some issues, and you've heard me talk before, but we believe that the sustainability of this island is a four legged. I used to call it a three-legged bar stool. It's a four-legged now. The first is beach replenishment and stabilization, dredging and maintenance of the bay, water conservation, land subsidence, and now flood mitigation. There's no doubt the oceans are rising, the northeast is subsiding, a lot having to do with groundwater pumping. Some of it has to do with how the glaciers formed the Appalachians, but that's beside the point. We're now talking about flood management, and I believe all the barrier islands at some point are going to end up like New Orleans, where you have to stop the water from coming on, whether you do it with bulkheads or strong dunes on the front. You have to handle the water that is on here, and all of it could be pumped off, but some of it could go to injection into the groundwater as part of a, there's a subset of groundwater, not what we take our water out of, but there is a subset below us. And then finally, with all of that, you have to make sure that it doesn't come back. And that's your ordinance, but I mean, there are some things we can deal with right now. I want to talk about what those are. First, we do need to cooperate with Avalon, and I'm going to tell you why. Avalon's doing their own study starting now. It's on their agenda. They're using what everybody that I go with, I'm an engineer, 25, 50, 100-year storms, how you design based on what storm event you're going to pick. This kind of a plan we have, it's kind of hidden in, it says we're going to use 10 and 25. There's almost nobody using a 10-year storm and a 25 anymore. And the reason we're using 10 is because we're going to assume that on certain rain events, we're going to flood the streets. We're going to assume on a 10 that the parking spaces will be flooded and no more than three feet encroachment into the lanes. That's a 10. That's the New Jersey protocol for 10. That's not Stone Harbor's protocol. 25 is the minimum we've had for years. And we have a kind of a Frankenstein system out there. We do. We have some intersections where the way the water gets from one side of the street to the other, I never heard it till this report, the bubbler method, which means it bubbles up, flows across the intersection, which floods it, and then bubbles back down. That's not an engineering, I didn't go to school to learn about the bubbler method. That's just kind of what I call Frankenstein. And so we have to fix, it wasn't mentioned by Ray, this program, I'm guessing is 20, 25 million minimum. You have pipes that are too small. You don't have drop structures which can accommodate, whether it be bubbler or direct inlets, and we have to get the water off the island, and some maybe, I think Lenore likes the idea of replenishment of groundwater injection, that's part of it, but at a 25, 50, 100-year storm, you're not going to be getting most of your water in replenishing and percolation. You have to get it off. And so what I'm recommending that you do for a study of this size and this importance, there are engineering firms all over the East Coast that would provide you what we call blue ribbon panel peer review. This report is so important, you can't rely on one engineering firm, no matter how much you trust them. You should have a peer review. Look at this, very inexpensive. People will do it $500 to $1,000 a day, three people, to give you a report. And the report does two things. Is this the right technology for this island? And the second thing is, if you're going to move into seven pump stations on this island, forget whether they're below ground or above ground, you're going to put generators in neighborhoods. And it isn't screening, it's noise. There isn't a generator in the world, including the one you have at the water tower, that doesn't have to get tested and run to make sure it works. That's noise, and no generators are quiet. And you're going to get into an O and M situation that this island's not had. You have wells, and you have some lift stations for sewage. Storm drain pump stations are a different animal. The material you're pumping has grit, sand, they're high maintenance items, and you need different personnel and a lot of them to maintain them and ready, backup power. The other thing in the report, we're going to have radio-operated sluice gates come down, hydraulics, mechanical, electrical, you're going to put those at the end of the storm drains. Maybe you will. Maybe you don't want to use those. There's people that have tried them and don't like them. You may want to hear their experience before you start. We're going to put stainless steel sluice gates at the end, radio-controlled, hydraulically operated, have to work in a storm sitting in a saltwater environment. May work. I'm just saying be very cautious. What we'd like for you to do immediately, immediately, is, and Councilman Karen raised this, put in an inflatable dam on the boat ramp. They work easily, they're easily installed, you inflate it, it goes down. Stop that from coming in. The fact you have a five wall down there and a three road ramp, if you saw the report, it said more than half of our outlets don't have check valves on them. Pick the top 10, they call them duck bill, they're very inexpensive, $1,500 to buy them. Pick the top 10 and put a bladder on them and shut them off. The fact that they have nothing, and the county's got 11 out of their 22 outlets, there's got to be a way. If they won't do it, do it for them. But that's, pick the ones that are flooding the most neighborhoods. $50,000, you could take care of a lot of this right now. It's an immediate action where you could purchase and install them. And finally, this is going to be an adaptive program. Weather's changing, climate's changing, you're going to start here, you're going to see where you have a different priority here. And so I got this Stone Harbor P O A, for their project of the year, will put up money so we can put in real-time monitoring of the problem neighborhoods. They will report out, it won't help your plan this year, but we want them to operate for several years where when it rains, sometimes you could have a slow, a low rainstorm, but a high tide. Sometime you could have a medium tide and a 25-year rainstorm, where you start to see what's the synergistic effect between rain and tide and the improvements you want to make. And so we're ready to go. Talked to Jill, you have to go through your budgeting process, but we'll have the money available in December. Maybe you want to do this in January, we install them and we start monitoring so that you can keep, every year you're going to have to update this plan, see what worked, modify it. This is not going to be a plan you adopt now and you say that plan's going to last for 10 years. You're going to have to keep updating this plan as things are changing. And nothing is going to be as good as real data. So, peer review, real data, coordinate with Avalon here. Avalon's using 25, 50, and 100 years, you're using a 10 and 25. 10, when your engineer comes back, if your engineer's here, 10, I don't know where that is in the beach community. FEMA doesn't live it, the Corps doesn't use it, the League of Cities doesn't use it. And I've never, I haven't used 10 in all my experience the last 30 years in California for a long time. So I'm just saying, if you're going to do this, and rainstorm events are critical in how you design what you're doing, especially when you have undersized pipe, 25, 50, 100. 100 will probably be, you can't afford it, but 25 and 50 probably is going to be in your wheelhouse, so.
Wally, what was the specific name of that peer review report?
We used to call it the blue ribbon panel, value engineering, we called it.
Value engineer?
So for example-
And also, we do have duck bills.
Yeah, I see them. I kayak by one when I go out at carnival. I see the duck bill, but I also see one of the six flap gates that your engineer found stuck open. And for me, that's a maintenance issue.
And I know Public Works checks them every week to make sure they're cleaned out, to make sure that, so that should be observed by them that it's left open.
Well, your engineer found it when he went around, so my answer is they probably were stuck open for more than one day. So the point is, a big storm's coming, big tide's coming, what's the first thing you do? Check the flap gates, make sure they're down. And especially if, you don't have all 60-some outfalls with flap gates. I think you own 20 of them. The county owns 11. So, you know, you know what I'm saying? Just, all you got to do is look over, get a baseball bat and hit it, you know, it's, make sure it shuts, because there's nothing as bad as someone getting flooded and find out we did have a flap gate, but it's stuck open. Anyhow, we're hoping, we're trying to be helpful. We're trying to make this a good plan, and we'll work with Jill and get comments in so that we all have something that we can be, say that is a real strong leg on that bar stool, you know, as we work on the other things we have to do, so.
Well, I appreciate your help, you know? I was all excited here 20 minutes ago, you know?
Well, yeah, then it makes it-
Now I'm thinking why I even doing this.
What, I pop your balloon?
It holds through everything.
No, I didn't.
And it's like, alright, well, why should we even go on another too much? But no, that's fine. It's great, all your comments are great. Thank you, I mean, I appreciate it.
Yeah, good.
Any help we get.
Good suggestions, Wally, thank you. And also thanks to Chippewa for offering financially to support what we need to do and so on and so forth. So stay in touch with Jill, it does appear to be quite a daunting task, but a necessary one, that we just got to get it right out of the gates.
Well, and the other thing with your, what you're doing with your 10-year financial planning, once this is done, say it is 25 million, you see how you're going to phase it in, you see how to plug it in in your 10-year plan along with, you know, less than 10-year dredging of the basins and bays, and what we're going to have to do on that beach. I don't know if a million cubic yards are going to be available like they were this year with federal funding. You paid half of the state, but you know where we're going here. At some point, we can start plugging these in, and people then know what the real cost of living here is. Thanks.
Mayor, if I may, I could just give a couple quick comments, feedback on that.
Okay.
First of all, I welcome any and all feedbacks. I appreciate, appreciate your comments. Regarding the 10 and 25-year storm events that the gentleman referred to, the reason we look at the 10-year event is because the 10-year, basically what that means literally is it would be a storm event that would happen on average every 10 years. So we look at the lower frequency events in this type of analysis because those events are going to have the highest impact on quality life because they're happening more frequently. So we want to analyze those events to determine what could be done to address those lower frequency events, because even though they may not be as catastrophic as the 50 and 100 year storms, those are the types of events that are affecting quality of life more frequently than the higher, the higher event storms. 25-year storm is your typical, in New Jersey, your typical design storm for storm sewer. 50 and 100-year storms, quite frankly, it's going to become cost prohibitive. I mean, if we tried to design this system for a 100-year storm event, it's going to be astronomical, and it would literally, it would be like designing a parking lot for a shopping mall for Black Friday, you know, times two or something like that. So you, there's a balance, as with everything, there's a balance, you try to make it so it's cost-effective, and I just wanted to give you that feedback on those, on the basis of the analysis. And of course, we'll take all this back into consideration.
I think we should really look at that peer review report.
Oh, yeah, which could be something, once we have a plan, we could set that up. I would agree with that, too. I would do, does everybody else see the value of that?
Yeah, I think so.
I would see the value in that.
We're not ready for that yet, but-
No, we're nowhere near it, but when, you know, maybe it'll get a certain comfort level that people can get to. Okay, any more discussion? Anybody else want to address mayor and council? I thought Wally was getting back up. What are you doing?
He's ready to leave.
Alright, you could go for just- Ordinance 1502.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1502 be taken up on second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1502 on second reading?
An ordinance amending chapter 10 of the general ordinances of the borough of Stone Harbor, specifically Article 10.4.
The public hearing on ordinance 1502 is open. Public hearing is closed.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1502 be passed on second reading and advance to third and final reading.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
No.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1502 on third and final reading?
An ordinance amending chapter 10 of the general ordinances of the borough of Stone Harbor.
Madam Mayor, I move, before I do that, I will state that this is an ordinance that is simply adding the words to an existing ordinance that stipulates the work sessions are included with the general sessions. So I move that ordinance 1502 be passed on third and final reading, adopted and published according to law.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
No.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Ordinance 1506.
Madam Mayor, I ask that ordinance 1506 be taken up on first reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can I have some discussion on this? Is this an appropriate place to discuss? It's really, I think, just a-
This is, this is the ordinance that we have discussed several times and agreed on the seven-year moratorium.
No, I understand, and I agree with it. I agree with it. I'm just saying, bottom of page four, I think we have five years instead of seven years written down there. I mean, it's an editorial change. The other is, at the work session last time, we agreed on 5, 10, and $15,000 fines, and that's not what's in here. This is saying 1, 5, and 10.
You're right, we did want those to be more painful.
So it's just an editorial.
No, that, then we should only do it-
My recollection was 2,500.
5, 10, and 15.
5, 10, 15.
Work session minutes, say.
Yeah.
So how would we proceed to get those changes in there?
Can we, can we do it based on the changes that will be applied by the second reading? That they will be changed to state that? Can that be done?
So that was your original intent, just simply a typographical error, that's what you discussed, that's what you decided. I would amend the document to comport with what your understanding is.
Okay.
So what are the amendments?
So it is 5, 10, and 15?
What do you mean, where is it?
Where is it? Ray, do you know exactly where that is?
I, well, I remember it from the last, oh, it's on page five.
It comes under emergency opening.
Yeah, on page 5A.
So it's 5,000, first one?
On the amount of 5,000.
5,000.
And then the next one is 10.
10, and then 15.
And the bottom of page four, it says seven years? It should be five?
Bottom of page four, newly paved streets, 475.7.
It should say five?
Well, the last sentence there-
It's spelled, the five is in F-I-V-E instead of numerical.
Yeah, but isn't it supposed to be seven?
It's seven, it should be seven years.
I'm just helping to find it. It's not just a five.
It's seven, too.
The amendment discussed is advancing five to seven.
Yes.
Just should say seven, a seven-year period.
A seven-year period articulated here.
It's spelled out.
So we, okay, so Mark, we can't just make these pen and ink changes and keep going? I'm saying you make these changes and proceed forward, yeah?
Yep. So, will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1506 on first reading?
An ordinance amending chapter 475 of the revised general ordinances updating requirements for street openings.
Madam Mayor, I ask that ordinance 1506 has, will be amended?
Be passed on first reading as amended.
I'm sorry?
Be passed on first reading as amended.
Be passed on first reading as amended, published according to law, and that it be taken up on second, third, and final reading and adoption at a meeting of mayor and council to be held on the 19th day of September, 2017.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Ordinance 1507.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move that ordinance number 1507 be taken up on first reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1507 on first reading?
Borough of Stone Harbor, County of Cape May, New Jersey, ordinance 1507, the flood damage prevention ordinance.
This is a, an amendment to an existing ordinance, which I believe incorporates new language from the state D E P. And we discussed this at the working group, last one, the last working group, where we went from 50% to 40%, once substantial improvements and sustainable damage. And Jill also talked earlier about the floor elevation, we're leaving it at two feet for now.
This is not an amendment, this is, replaces chapter 300.
Yeah, this actually, yeah, it replaces the entire chapter.
Okay.
With that correct information that Ray just said. Now move. Move if you pass on first.
So I move that ordinance number 1507 be passed on first reading, that it be published according to law, and that it be taken up for second, third, and final reading. Meeting of Mayor and Council will be held on 19, the 19th day of September, 2017.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Ordinance 1508.
Madam Mayor, I ask that ordinance 1508 be taken up on first reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1508 on first reading?
An ordinance amending chapter 560 zoning of the borough of Stone Harbor.
This is the ordinance we discussed earlier about striking political signs, specifically from the ordinance on signs. So I move that ordinance 1508 be passed on first reading, published according to law, and that be taken up on second, third, and final reading and adopted at a meeting of mayor and council to be held on the 19th day of September, 2017.
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S-185.
Madam Mayor and Council, I offer resolution number 2017 S-185 for adoption.
Second.
This is a refund to Stephanie Spossato for $50. Because of her late arrival in Stone Harbor, her son would not be able to participate in a basketball clinic.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S-186.
Madam Mayor and Council, I offer resolution 2017 S-186 for adoption.
Second.
This resolution refunds Donna Ward $35 for a boys' basketball clinic. Her son was participating in the league, so it would be free for him.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Par, Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S-187.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution 2017 S-187 for adoption.
Second.
Second.
This to approve, this is a proven agreement between Atlantic City Electric for the 95th Street roadway and curb restoration associated with the Piermont project in the amount of $175,000 that they will be releasing to us.
I just have one question. You need a second first, correct? Second. Okay. Why does it say draft? Why does it say draft?
Why does it say draft, on the agreement?
So it says draft because I mailed it to Atlantic Electric's council, and the copy without draft hasn't been printed out, but the final copy will not say draft.
We have to approve it.
This represents a-
It's just so big, how can you not ask that question?
It represents a substantial difference from the agreement that we were presented by them.
Okay.
And they basically went along with all of our changes, which were marked and substantial.
Everybody has it on theirs, right?
No.
No.
Because you have a paper copy and you keep scrolling your book.
The actual agreement is draft.
Yes, you have the-
Mine doesn't-
The one that'll be signed will not say draft.
If you go all the way down to the actual agreement, keep going.
I see, big draft. Big draft. Big draft.
Joan, are we, are we, are we sure we can accomplish the work for $175,000? That was my only question, like they, you know-
Are we sure of anything?
That's only their contribution for a portion of it.
That's their contribution to us, for a portion.
Jill may have an answer.
The 175 is the estimate that was given to us by our engineer for what it would cost for us to do their repairs, so yes.
Oh, okay.
So we got a second, we explained it, we can now call the roll. Correct? Okay. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Okay.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S-188.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution 2017 S-188 for adoption.
Second.
This resolution refunds overpayment at our kiosk for parking to two individuals, one of whom overpaid by $8, and one of whom overpaid by $7, totaling $15 in refunds.
Any discussion?
Yes.
It's my understanding, the machine says no refunds.
I suppose it's like, everyone, it's like, do I have to...
The machine itself says no refunds.
Yeah.
And also, it says no change given.
Yeah.
And no change.
Hmm.
But I think we can refund it if we want to.
How do we know that what he's telling us is right?
Pardon?
I don't, what is he saying? He didn't park for that length of time?
Uh, no, he inserted too much money.
Too much money.
He inserted a 10, didn't get change.
If you put a dollar in and you need 15 minutes, you don't get 75 cents back.
No.
No, you don't.
You don't.
But maybe he must...
You know, it's...
He was mistaken and thought it was a dollar, and he put in a 10.
This is...
As silly as it sounds, and this does sound very silly.
I'm sorry it sounds silly, but...
So it's worth, you know, but it's worth the goodwill to these two people.
I would agree with that.
I agree 100%.
I would agree with that.
Goodwill is exactly the words I was looking for.
Everybody gets to vote.
I offer it.
Did we get a second?
Yes, I seconded.
Any more discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
No.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S-189.
Madam Mayor and Council, I offer resolution number 2017-S-189 for adoption.
Second.
This, this resolution is a agreement between the Borough of Stone Harbor and the state DEP in regards to the execution of the $2.7 million grant, flood mitigation grant that we received to do the Zone C.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?